Good evening and welcome to the Monday night, May 17th, 2021, Bryan City Council meeting at 5:30. Will you always join me in the, um, Fledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one is approval of the minutes.
I'll motion to approve, Jim.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Um, hearing of public concerns, Mary or do we have anybody?
I do not at this time. If the phone rings or someone comes up, we'll go ahead and let them in.
Okay. Item number three is residential blight procedures.
Good evening. Uh, Mayor asked me to come, uh, give you a brief overview of our residential blight procedures. Um, I prepared a PowerPoint presentation for you. Um, we'll go ahead.
She's got a TV, John, so you're not in her way.
Nope.
Thanks. So usually the first step is a warning letter is sent out by regular mail. Um, this states what the violation is or that you are close to a violation and your house, the violation is being monitored. Um, reason for this is so you can start planning and start saving for the repairs. Um, typically you get a, at least a year for a warning letter. Um, depends on the severity of the violation. You know, if I notice a hole in somebody's roof, I'm not going to give them a year. They're, they're gonna have to fix that right away. So. Um, when it is deemed necessary, a violation letter is sent by certified mail. Um, part of that letter is you have 30 days to notify the city engineering department of a course of action for the said violation. Um, can't stress, stress this enough. It's imperative that you contact us so we can work together and get the issue resolved. Um, you have 90 days to complete said action. Um, like I said, communication is key. Uh, I can work with you on timeframes and whatnot. I know it's hard to get a contractor right now and other circumstances, so. Um, as part of that, if no communication results in a filed or a citation filed with the city attorney and the court process is started. So after 90 days and you have not contacted me on anything, I prepare the paperwork and send it down to the city attorney. Um, failure to comply with said action will result in this citation filed with the, and the court process started. So I'll work with you on your 90 days. Any additional time, over a certain amount of time, nothing still gets done. I'm gonna have to send you down to the city attorney to get it started. Um, city may make repairs with costs charged against the real estate and/or a lien put on the property. That's our final step. Uh, as you can see here, um, really started hammering this in 2018. Uh, there was 176 warning letters sent out in 2018, 46 were corrected, 51 violation letters, 30 of those were corrected. No citations were issued in 2018 down to the city attorney. Uh, 2019, 167 warning letters, 45 of those are corrected. Uh, 33 violation letters, 14 of those were corrected and four were sent to the city attorney for lack of communication. Um, in 2020, again, 167 warning letters, 32 of those were corrected. Uh, 53 violation letters were sent out, 21 of those were corrected and 12 were sent to city attorney for citations last year. Um, so far this year, I have 112 warning letters out and 44 violation letters out. Um, I have not driven to see who's corrected what yet this year. Typically wait till later in the year on that. And I do have additional letters that need to be sent out yet. I just haven't had time to get them prepared, so. Those numbers will increase.
Andy, I just want to verify those citations for 2020. We did put several months of a moratorium on during the pandemic and so most of those citations were towards the November, December months of 2020. Is that correct?
Correct.
So councils, do you have any questions for Andy on that process? We just wanted to make sure you knew how the ordinance stood and how we follow that up here and if you had any questions or comments.
No, I appreciate that. We go back a couple slides where that's a violation because of the steps there. There you go. So when the, thank you. When the violation letter gets sent, would that violation letter give them those timeframes and that comment that it's imperative to contact me?
Yes.
Okay. Does that mean it's very helpful to say, look?
It doesn't say imperative, but it says, states in there 30, you have 30 days to contact city engineering department to state your course of action.
Well, I certainly don't mean to micromanage and I will not. If, if this seems like you might wanna pick, perhaps it could be because I don't know that. It's helpful to add some details, but it's very important that he contact you so we can communicate. It just feels more personal. It feels more personal to me. Just don't, don't get your arm not apologetic. I understand what's gonna happen. A lot of people are gonna ignore it regardless. I get that. But I think it looks better for us as a city to say, you know, we reached out to you. We made sure that you knew that you needed to contact us. It's very important. Right now they can say, I didn't think it was that big of a deal. What was the big deal? Well, we told you, you had 30 days, 90 days, and that it was important to contact us so I could work with you.
Sure.
There's something to think about.
So Mr. Betts, I do have a copy of the letter and, um, it will say, you know, the city requires the following items to be addressed. And then it will list that and then it says, within 30 days of this notice, you are to submit a course of action to the zoning administrator. Within 90 days of this notice, you are to complete the course of action as approved by the zoning administrator. Failure to remedy the situation will result in a citation and the city may make the repairs with the cost charged against the real estate and a lien put on the real estate. And then it also includes Andy's phone number at work and his email addresses, two ways to contact him. So I think it's laid out pretty well there.
Okay. Um, if you, if you feel those all that, I was just saying to make it very clear.
Yes.
And that's, and if you guys think that's clear, I'm not gonna micromanage it. I'm just saying it's one imperative that you make the contact is what's being stated to us there, but if that's not being stated to them, it seems like that gives them a little bit of a loop.
I can, I can make that stand out.
It's, that's, that's up, that's up to you guys. I, it's just, it was just a thought. It really wasn't meant as any. Quite frankly, I want you to know, I want everybody to know publicly. I support this. I read some stuff in The Times tonight. I get it. But quite frankly, I have heard a lot in the last year and a half from a lot of my constituents about how much progress has been made in the last couple of years. I don't know if, oh, you have to. I have heard that from not, not three people, a lot of folks saying there's a lot of stuff going on that we really appreciate, et cetera. So I think when, and it's also good to know that when someone calls us up and says, hey, hey, hey. Next thing I knew, sheriff was out, or excuse me, the police department was out here with a warrant for my arrest because I, I, I didn't know anything. Now wait a minute. You got a, you know, so it's very good for us to know that and I appreciate that. And I appreciate what you, Brian, um, do, uh, to, to, to make Brian a, a better place, uh, to, to live. So I want, I'm gonna make sure I support that totally. I was just making a thought.
Yeah.
I think for me, I wouldn't want to live next door to one of those. I mean, you know, it's, you try to keep your house up and keep it nice and neat and you don't want your neighbors to look trashy, so.
Yeah. Typically there are several letters that get sent out before they would go down to city attorney, so.
And then once it goes to the city attorney, there are letters from municipal court that they would get before a warrant would be issued. It's just when they. That's the piece where we just need the public. If you get things from us and, and we know governing, government, some people just resist communicating with us, but it's really important on this issue that you do because we, none of us want it to escalate to where it could be a, a warrant.
Sure.
Including the judge. So we just, we just need people to call or email us.
Absolutely. Communication is key.
Does, does this, uh, let's say someone's house goes damaged by fire. Does that fall under this as well or is that a whole different?
Uh, typically that's a separate issue. Work with the fire department. Depends if there's insurance and other, other factors.
Okay.
So.
And that's a much slower process, especially, you know, because they have to investigate whether it was arson or not and then they have to give a timeline. And if there's no insurance, it tends to extend that timeline and a lot of that's through the fire department and state fire marshal.
So I think once everything gets taken care of, then we issue 180 days.
Okay.
To get stuff started, so. I have to double check on that. It's been a while. I know. I know you've had one in your neighborhood recently then.
Actually, I've had three in the city.
So.
Relatively recently. It's been about a year for that.
So, yeah. Um, would like to point out, uh, we have no intention of taking somebody's house. I'm not sure where that came from, but again, call me, email me, write me a letter. I'm more than happy to work with you to get the issue resolved and I can point in contractors directions. Possibly help you get some funding maybe, so more than happy to work with you. Just reach out to me.
And, and I'd like to compliment the engineering department because I know there have been cases where someone has called and said, I'm physically not able or financially not able and they're really good at trying to find a church or a civic organization to help. Um, or, I mean, I think Cliff grabbed some guys maybe and from the city and went and cleaned up an older gentleman's property because he just was old and didn't have any relatives. So we're not the enemy. We're trying to do what we can to partner with the community to make it a nicer place. Um, and we don't want to drop the hammer, but when the hammer's the only option left, that's where we have to go with it.
To answer one of your questions previously, I think you asked on the ratio of tenant to home or occupied.
I did.
Um, I was off on that. This, this in 2021, it's running about 50%.
Ooh.
So.
Ooh. So, cause I, my, it just, my interest was in, do we have a vast amount of slum lords? I mean, that's really where I was going with it, so. And if it's only like, if it's 80% or 90%, uh, residential owned and not landlord.
I thought it would've been closer to 70%, but it's running at about 50% this year.
Well, then we have some potential landlord bulk. No, thank you.
But I will say the feedback, uh, this year from the 55 letters that I sent out, um, I have been receiving a lot of phone calls, letters, emails.
Good.
So people are reaching out to me and I'm working with them.
Perfect.
Good. I think it's a good program.
Thank you, Andy.
All right.
Thank you, Andy.
Thank you.
Up next is item number three, oh, excuse me, actually item number four, um, clerk's treasures report.
The council has been presented with the clerk treasures report for the month ending April 30, 2021.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, was that written?
Yep.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Item number five is.
I'll motion to suspend.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
Do we have to suspend it? No. Okay. Guess we're good.
Yay!
Sorry.
That's okay.
All right, you two.
We're gonna separate us.
Yeah. You can go to your own corners.
Jim, you have to come down here.
Maybe next time.
Mary and I got into it. Next thing I know, I'm coming here.
You're in timeout.
All right. Item number five, will you please number and read?
This is ordinance number 17, 2021, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Eminem Asphalt LTV for the project known as 2021 Bryan Senior Center Parking Lot Improvements.
Good evening. Uh, this was brought to your attention a couple of months ago and I asked for permission to bid it. The lowest bid was $102,421.42 by Eminem Asphalt Limited. Uh, we received three or four bids. I apologize. I didn't bring that spreadsheet with me. Um, but this was the lowest and best bid. Um, as a side note, I did receive a check this week from the Bryan Area Foundation for a hundred thousand dollar donation towards this like we anticipated. Um, I had enough money in my budget to award this, so, um, I believe the next council meeting will actually accept the donation and appropriate that in kind of on the back door. We didn't want to hold this up because it was gonna be three weeks till the next meeting. So we want to go ahead and get the contract executed. So, uh, with that, I would request you suspend the rules and authorize us to execute the contract.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number six in ordinance, will you please number and read?
This is ordinance number 18, 2021, an ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Fire Training Structures LLC for the project known as Bryan Fire Department Live Fire Training Structure Rebuild.
Hi, Chief.
Good evening, council.
Evening.
Um, you have, you have before you the, uh, bid tab for this, uh, project. Um, we had two bidders and tonight I'd like for you to, um, approve and award the bid to, um, the lowest bidder, which is the Live Fire Training Structures Company out of Phoenix, Arizona.
Council, do you have any questions about this fire training facility?
Uh, I, I do, but it's just, it, it sounds, it sounds like a antagonistic question and it's not meant that way. But based on some past history, we have vetted this, this group out.
So.
Is that a fair ques- I mean, I don't mean to.
Yeah, so Chief, I think maybe if you could address with council, this is a different structure than the cement one that we had previously built. Um, so that's why the cost is lower. Um, but it, it's prefabbed, right, what we're getting?
Yes. Um, the National Fire Protection Association standards on fire training buildings changed in 2018 after we built this, built this last building. With that came a lot of other restrictions for a block and mortar building like we presently have today. We cannot afford to put up another block and mortar building based on current standards. So this training structure is actually built out of intermodal containers. In other words, the, uh, the trailers that you see on ships and the trailers that you see on the railroads. Uh, these are the types of containers that, uh, these types of structures are being built out of today and they do meet the standards at a substantial savings. Good.
Mm-hmm.
That's gonna take a lot less time to put up then too, isn't it?
Yes, we're hoping to, if you approve this, we're hoping that we can have this up and running by this fall in time for our fire academy classes to start.
I guess my question was, and I, and I appreciate that, but my question was more related to, um, the vetting out of the actual, um, Bryan Fire Department Live Training Structure Rebuild. Is that the name of the company?
It's the Live Fire Training.
Live Fire Training? That was my question. Uh, they've fairly been, they're fairly reputable, but that's really all.
What do you know about this company?
What do I know about the company?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, the company is reputable. They've been around for quite a while. Um, they do all of the prefab manufacturing there at their facility in Arizona and then they ship everything to the site and they put everything together on site. And once that's done, um, everything's third party certified, so.
Okay.
Um, when they get all said and done, we get a certificate. There's actually a tag. It goes on to the side of the structure that states that is in fact, um, met the requirements of NFPA. And they also provide us with two days of training on site with the, with the structure.
Perfect. That answered my question exactly. Thank you.
Chief, what kind of life expectancy will we have with this, this structure?
Uh, obviously everything's gonna be dependent upon how many burns we do and things like that. But with this particular structure, I'm looking for probably 15 years or so. And then with that, uh, most of the damage is going to be in the burn chambers and there's two in this particular unit. And because they're intermodal containers, um, we can actually slide the damaged one out and slide a, a new one in. We don't have to rebuild the whole thing.
Nice.
Well, I'll motion to suspend.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Up next is item number seven in ordinance. Will you please number and read?
This is ordinance number 19, 2021, an ordinance providing for annual appropriations for the city of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021 and declaring an emergency. The, um, additional appropriations that are attached to this ordinance are for the general fund for the parks department for the amphitheater expenses of $3,960. And then also for the musical playground equipment, $10,119.56. And also for the 401 capital improvement fund, the senior center parking lot, is additional appropriation of $100,000. Which the total is $1,014.79.56.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Move to approve.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes. Item number eight is an ordinance. Will you please number and read?
This is ordinance number 20, 2021, an ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into a purchase agreement with Robert A. Lloyd for the purchase of a strip of land near the detention pond in Bryan, Ohio situated in the county of Williams and the state of Ohio being 0.135 acres, more or less, with permanent parcel number 063-210-03-010.000.
Good evening. Um, the city attorney actually prepared this legislation and I'm hoping not stepping on her toes by speaking, but I'll give you a little, little history behind this. Um, Mr. Lloyd approached me a month or two ago. He bought some property out on Evansport Road. Uh, it's the former Nick, former Nichols property. It's not within the city limits, but it's right adjacent to the retention pond. And, uh, he cleaned the property up a little bit, has a building permit for a house and they were gonna put the septic system on the west side of the parcel. When, uh, he had the property surveyed, he found out he did not own as far over as he thought he did. We thought he did. He thought he did. The county auditor showed that he did, but actually the survey showed it didn't. So, um, he's kind of in panic mode a little bit and, uh, doesn't really, it's gonna stop his project because other portions of his property aren't really suitable for a septic system. So he came to me and asked for the possibility of acquiring a 30-foot strip of land and, uh, we discussed it and I actually created a boundary survey for it and we're here asking you for permission to sell him that strip of land.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
I move to approve, Jim.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Lloyd appreciates this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number nine, a status change on police department.
Good evening. Um, here before you is a paper stating Stephen Dockers completed his eight years or will be completing his eight years of full-time service at the city of Bryan Police Department on June 3rd. In accordance with the contract, I would like to have his step and his rate be adjusted to contract compensation.
I move to approve, Jim. I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief.
Up next is item number 10, higher seasonal part-time parts.
Good evening, council. In front of you, you should have a couple of letters from me. Number one, hiring Brooks and Kay, Brooks Brown and Caleb Zouver on a 30-day hire through the mayor's office. And then also me requesting to have them be hired, um, as seasonal part-time employees for the summer months. And then you should also have a letter in front of you from Bruce Wheeler, um, outlining our first group of pool employees that we would like to hire, um, in an attempt to get ready for the summer swim season.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Ben, just to reiterate, we are still looking for lifeguards. If any would like to apply, they can come up to the parks department for an application. Is that correct?
We absolutely are still looking for lifeguards. Uh, we would even have a couple, um, non-certified positions at the pool that we're willing to hire, um, and even potentially a couple out at the park maintenance building that we have not filled as of yet.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you, guys.
Up next is item number 11, motion to approve amphitheater contracts.
Okay, in front of you, you should have, um, all of our guidelines and procedures that we have in place, um, at this current moment for the Fountain City Amphitheater. Good evening, Council. In front of you, you should have a couple letters from me, number one, hiring Brooks and Ca, Brooks Brown and Caleb Zuver on a thirty-day hire through the mayor's office, and then also me requesting to have them be hired as seasonal part-time employees for the summer months. And then you should also have a letter in front of you from Bruce Wheeler outlining our first group of pool employees that we would like to hire, and in attempt to get ready for the summer swim season.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
John?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And Ben, just to reiterate, we are still looking for lifeguards. If any would like
to apply, they can come up to the Parks Department for an application, is that correct?
We absolutely are still looking for lifeguards. We would even have a couple non-certified positions at the pool that we're willing to hire, and even potentially a couple out at the park maintenance building that we have not filled as of yet.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben.
Up next is item number eleven, motion to approve amphitheater contracts?
Okay, in front of you, you should have all of our guidelines and procedures that we have in place at this current moment for the Fountain City Amphitheater. A couple things I want to draw your attention to is, number one, these, these documents are working documents. What we figured out as we start to get going with the amphitheater is every time we think we thought of everything, something pops up that we haven't thought of. So, these are our guidelines to help us move forward, but again, they are working documents. The other thing I'd like to draw your attention to within the documents is the fee structure for rental. We tried very hard to be very competable with the Arts and Ed Building, so very similar facility. So, that's kind of what our fee structure is at this point. Again, it's something that we'll continue to look at annually as we move forward, to be competitive and be able to rent the amphitheater for people to use. And then the last thing I need you to kind of take a peek at and make sure everybody's on the same page with is the permission for alcoholic beverages to be served with the proper paperwork and permits, not only through the state of Ohio, but also through the city of Bryan. Again, I wanted to get all these in your hands, Jeffrey has done a tremendous job. I can't thank Rhonda enough, I can't thank the mayor enough. They have worked patiently with us to work through these documents. I bet Rhonda has looked at these at least three or four times. So, I want to thank them, but I want you guys to know and have in your hands exactly how we plan to move forward and make the amphitheater a success. So, I would ask for a motion, just, just acknowledging that you have them and have accepted the paperwork in front of you.
And then, before that motion is, is there, Ben's obviously here for any questions you have, but to follow up, we know that if we change something, we're not gonna come back to council, and this is really an administrative piece, but because it's new, and council was involved in the twenty twenty project from the beginning, we felt we owed you that courtesy to see it, and also to give you all the information if anyone asked you about the amphitheater, because quite frankly, I think it's gonna be a pretty hot topic for a while. The other piece is, if someone would choose as a five oh one C three to get a liquor permit, they have to submit that to the state thirty days before the event, and it has to have the police chief and my signature. So, that is different than the liquor permits that come before council for businesses. You won't see those, and quite frankly, the one that we got was on day thirty, so we had to do a lot of rushing around. We wouldn't be able to probably have council meetings on it anyway, so I just wanted to make sure that everyone in the room had the same expectations. If there's any concerns, I'd just like to talk about them now.
I, on my review, I have no concerns. I think it's very comprehensive. I, I couldn't punch holes in it, and I will agree with Ben and everyone else, and I also agree with you, I don't think it needs to come back here, but as you evolve, it, the contract will evolve. You're gonna find out that Billy Bob, who had a contract with us, did something we didn't anticipate, and it's gonna need to be changed next time. That's called life. It's an evolution. So, I think this was a very good, very good document in terms of where it's starting, and it'll evolve from, it'll evolve from there. That's my thoughts.
Yeah, I agree with John. I think it's very comprehensive, it's, it's got everything outlined. I'm looking forward to it.
Anybody else?
I have nothing to add.
Well, I'd certainly like to thank Ben, and Jeffrey, and Rhonda, and Cindy, and everyone involved in the work with the amphitheater and the applications, because there, there is a lot of paperwork for those first ones. And I also want to let council know that the amphitheater will open up this Saturday, and it will be a no, a noon to nine event, and it's with the Joyce Reader Memorial Benefit, and it's actually raising funds for Tavis and Cala Lucas. I don't know if you know them, but they're both students at Bryan City Schools, and their parents died, mom from cancer and dad from an industrial accident last year within seven months of each other. So, we're hoping the community comes out, lifts up these kids. Council, if you, if you pop in and you can't figure out which one Jeffrey is, let me know, and I'll make sure you get introduced. He's been a welcome team to the city, so thank you. But with that, we do need a motion.
I'll motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Thank you very much, Council.
Thanks, Ben.
Thanks, Ben. Once again, Ben.
Up next is item number twelve, a resignation, the clerk's treasure.
Um, yes, this is a great regret. We had a resignation from Allison Cooney, I'll read her letter. "I am formally giving my resignation effective July thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Due to family issues, I will be unable to remain working full-time for the city of Bryan. I will be available if needed after that date, eight to twelve hours a week, to help train those being hired to fill my position. And she thanks you so much for the opportunity you afforded me in the five years I've been employed with you. I enjoyed the job and the people I have worked with immensely."
We're pretty sad about it. We are. She's been a great worker for the city. She and Lisa complemented each other very well in the tax department. And it is ironic, today is the filing deadline for taxes. Yes, the extension.
It's true, I didn't think of that.
She may not have had so many regrets today, as she, no, I'm just kidding. They're busy today. No, she's, she's a very good employee, we are sad to see her go.
Yeah, I'm sad to see her. Well, I move with regret to accept.
I'll second.
Judy?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Up next is item number thirteen, permission to post clerk's treasures office?
Yes, and because of the resignation, we'd like to ask you if we can post for a clerk's treasures position, and just open it up for that.
I'll move that we allow the posting of the clerk's treasures position.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes everything on the agenda, so now we'll go around the room. Anyone from the city have anything they'd like to add? No?
Okay.
BMU, I don't know if BMU's on TV or not. And that takes us to Jim, I'm going back for his time.
Oh, boy.
You just never know.
I'd like to congratulate Doc on his years of service at the, the Bryan Police Department, and wish you many more. And then, I'd like to say thank you to Allison Cooney, I know she'll be missed, and I wish her the best. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Rick?
First thing I want to do is I want to thank Andy for, and the whole engineering department for what they've done with the, the city blight. I think that, you know, we've been talking a lot about downtown, and the things that we want to see happen there, but we don't want to forget that we're also doing those types of things in the residential areas, trying to make Bryan a pleasant appearing place for those people that come to visit here. And we know it's a great place, but we want to make sure that everybody else sees what we see. I also want to wish Allison Cooney best as she moves on to other things, and I believe that's, that's, oh, and Mr. Doctor, I want to congratulate him on, on, and thank him for the years of service and continued service to the city.
Thank you, Rick. Judy?
Also, thank, thank you, Andy, and the engineering department for the work that you do do, and I'm sure a lot of times you get a lot of complaints that you don't bring here, that we don't hear, but thank you for that.
Fantastic.